Okay, at seven o'clock, I'd like to call a meeting in order to please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, make a note, everybody's present tonight, and we'll start with, uh, old business. Item number one is approval of minutes. The regular meeting minutes of December 1st, 2022 were provided review. I need a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of December 1st, 2022, as presented.
Go move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call a roll.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stednikah?
Yes.
Mr. Trinkle?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Motion passed. Audience participation, anyone in the audience? And I see there isn't but to do this. Any of you who would like to address the council? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, but not publicly.
Yes, not publicly. New business, item number two is public hearing on and consideration of the amended 2022 budget. The capital improvements fund requires an amendment to the 2022 budget. The biggest change to the budget is for the K7 and Eisenhower project expense line. KDOC reimbursements that offset the expenses are typically received 30 to 45 days after billing. This will result in the invoices that are paid by the city in 2022 is not being reimbursed by KDOC until '23. Now, the final payment to KDOC for the DeSoto Road project was also paid in 2022. So minor adjustments were made to other expense line items to reflect actual expenditures. So motions, I need to open the public hearing for amendments to the 2022 budget.
Go move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Call a roll.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stednikah?
Yes.
Mr. Trinkle?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Public hearing is now open. We have anybody who would like to address or any anything from you on the council on this one? Any questions of Beth? Okay, so now I need a motion to close the public hearing for the amendments on the 22 budget.
Go move.
Have a motion and a second. Call a roll.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stednikah?
Yes.
Mr. Trinkle?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Okay, the public hearing is closed. I now need a motion to adopt the amendments to the 2022 budget as presented.
Go move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Call a roll.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stednikah?
Yes.
Mr. Trinkle?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
All right, motion passed. Item number three is ordinance 1092, Ward Boundaries. Ordinance number 1092 establishes Ward 1 through 4 boundaries and precincts to take effect 1 January, 2023. I need a motion to approve ordinance 1092 establishing wards 1 through 4 boundaries as presented.
Go move.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this one?
Yeah, what changed? It looks about like the same one we had.
Um, yeah, we we tried to keep it about as similar as we could. So you can see Ward 1 goes slightly on the west side of K7 now. I think that's by a car dealership in that neck of the woods. Trying to think of what else.
Ward 3, I lose, I think I lose Willow Point in that area in Rock Creek.
Yeah, and we, that goes back to, we tried to make Gilman the boundary, um, and we were able.
That's right.
Yeah, we were able to lose, you know, we can't pick those shapes. So we were able to lose that one shape. I can't see the number. But that little tail that goes south of Gilman.
Right.
Uh, that starts up in Wyndham, we we had to keep that constant. So, yeah, that was one change.
Wait a minute, you don't have that?
This is rock, this is, this is Rock Creek here.
Yeah.
I used to have this right here.
Yeah, you don't have that anymore?
I don't have anymore. You got, you got that, don't you?
Yeah.
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 And I didn't have this, 55, that used to be different. Now that's in my ward, right? See 55 up there?
Can you, can you zoom in on that a little bit?
Yeah, just like the little shield shape.
Yeah.
I think you're right, Jesse.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't think there's any houses right there.
Okay.
I think that's just a little bit of a field.
Okay.
Now, what, what was the 55?
Yeah, that little shield looking.
Yeah, it's right, right there in the middle right now. See next to the 108? Take your mouse down, 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 down.
Under 114, just below 60.
Down, down a little bit. Now, just a little bit. You're all over the place with that thing.
Well, who is that? Who's operating that mouse? Hey, give me that.
It's no big deal. We can move on.
But that is a change, yes.
No driver's license for him.
I think the next time we do this, we're just gonna highlight all the little minor changes, but it was really minor.
I was gonna say, yeah, to get back to the earlier question, it was, we, we tried to keep it as similar as possible. Since we removed, uh, LCF from the census, um, we did have to go across, uh, K7 a little bit.
Boundary changes because the balanced population in the ward. Understand that, why, why is it we can't go across the highway? Why we're all crammed down 1 and 2 down, you know, and 3 and 4 crammed up, can't we, can't we come across? I mean.
Well, 1 is coming across, they're on the top.
Yeah, just that 180, that's what changed. I remember that.
But so, I mean, the, you, the, the county election officer, the census office, I mean, they're not letting us break those apart. I mean, it'd be so much easier if we were able to split those internally. And I don't know what federal government official, you know, drew these boundaries the way they did. Uh, because we certainly wanted to make, you know, Gilman the boundary or, uh, you know, things like that, but it just didn't work.
How, how, how do we get that changed for the next census or whatever?
Yeah.
Can that be changed?
They went to all the work to redraw the districts. I mean, they put a lot of time and effort into it. They turned it in, they go, oh, no, you can't do that.
Yeah, we, I wanna say we.
I don't understand. That's, that's my question.
Yeah, if I remember correctly, it dealt with the census tracts.
Right.
And it, and it would have taken, I won't say an act of Congress, but would have taken quite a bit of effort to disturb what they have already put out by boundaries.
I can double check too.
It, it wasn't the 73 was the main judicial boundary, and you couldn't, you couldn't mess with that, wasn't it, Greg?
Now, I think that might be a little bit different issue when it was about the boundaries of the, uh,
Of the ward.
Splitting the highways with congressional districts. I think that's what you're referring to. We had that issue years ago. But this is more about the census boundaries, the way they categorize those. And then, and then when we've looked into that, it, it's not as easy as, I mean, like Tim, when you look at it, you're like, well, hey, why can't we just chop off that little bit and square it up? And it's just not that simple.
Yeah, I know.
When you gotta deal with the feds to get them to change because of the census overlay.
And I know Janet Klizensky was telling us, I wanna say she even reached out to the Secretary of State, and they wouldn't, modify anything or allow us to modify anything. So I'm not sure if, you know, we have to take it higher than that, but even then, I'm not sure there's a guarantee.
Well, yeah, and I, I, if it, I guess if it impacted the governing body, for example, they just started randomly chunking out this area here. And, and, you know, two of our reps live there in that ward.
Yeah.
And now, all of a sudden, they're in Ward 1.
Yeah.
Now what, right? You gotta have a special election or something because they determined wherever they wanted to put the line?
Yeah, like, well, like, like I'm right on the boundary right now, Ward 2 up there in the corner.
Yep.
I mean, if that boundary changes, you know, and I'm, I'm all of a sudden in Ward 1, I lose my seat, and you'd have to have a special election or appoint somebody.
Right, and I think probably because that didn't occur in here, and we moved them around just enough to get about the approximate population, we didn't really.
Yeah, I know.
We didn't care much more after that.
What, what was it when we, we tried to, Greg, when they, they did, uh, Ward, uh, 2A or 2, you know, when they split Ward 2?
I'm trying to remember how long, Dave, that's quite a while ago, but my recollection, if, if we're talking the same thing, is it had to do with congressional and/or other elected officials about jumping the highway. It had to stay within certain precincts, if I remember. I might got the terminology wrong, but it had something to do with, it, it, you couldn't split the highway or it had to.
I think Mayor Bernard told me one time it had something to do with, with 73. That's why we had to have 2, you know, Ward 2, Precinct 1, Ward, you know, they had 2 precincts. There was something to do with the state at the state level.
My recollection has something to do with the federal election about crossing 73 Highway.
What, what I don't understand is, I, I'm having a difficult time understanding why it's a big deal. Because what we have works, and I feel is fair and equitable. So I don't know why we would want to change it.
Well, and the, and the comment was made years ago, I think, when we, we had the group that got together and was trying to figure out the boundaries. We was wanting to make it, like Terry said, equitable and fair, because how would you, you know, how would somebody over in Ward 1 be representative fairly from somebody from, you know, up, up in the new housing areas compared to Ward, uh, Ward 1?
Well, as you know, Dave, these are always gonna change as the city grows.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, at some point, to Don's.
That's what he said. He said eventually it probably would change, but it right now.
To Don's point, if the west side of 73 Highway continues to grow, he could very well find himself, you know, still serving 20 years from now. I could find himself, that is all of Ward 1 on the east side of the highway. I mean, it just be, could be based solely on population.
Well, I've, I've already seen those boundaries change over the years.
Sure.
It used to be, it used to be Kansas, and then it was West Mary, East Mary, and then now all of a sudden, it comes right up my street.
Right.
Yeah, I understand the ordinance, you know, the law, where you gotta balance the population based on census.
Sure.
Where the population lives, but my question is, these precincts, you know, on the federal level, why they, those can't change with it? You know, why is that such a difficult thing?
I guess when, when the census comes up again, I mean, we can talk to our census officers about why the tracts are shaped the way they are. Because again, I, I don't know why they're shaped the way they are. You can see some of them that kind of go along creeks. Some of them go along streets, but others don't. So I'm, I'm really not sure why it is the way it is.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else on this one? All right, I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 1092. Call a roll.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stednikah?
Yes.
Mr. Trinkle?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number four is ordinance 1093, uh, general obligation bond, Series 2022. Ordinance number 1093 authorizes the levy of a 0.45% retailers' general purpose sales tax and related matters. The sales tax ballot question passed by a margin of 1,721 yes and 1,698 no. This would raise Lansing's sales tax rate by nine point, oh, to 9.4% beginning 1 July, 2023, and will sunset 20 years after that. Based on the most recent projections, the city could see an additional 500,000 to 600,000 per year to be devoted to a municipal aquatic center. So I need a motion to approve ordinance number 1093 and authorize necessary signatures.
Go move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this one?
What, what are we gonna, what happens to the money that we, uh, we're not, we're not gonna start right on the park, right off the bat? Or the pool, or whatever the money's gonna be used for? What do we do with it? Does it go into a fund that, that build, uh, build up, or what?
Yeah, so when you guys look at those quarterly reports that Beth puts in the packets, um, we separate that 0.45 cent for like DeSoto Road and Bernard Park right now. That's what we would do for this, so it would build up until we would construct the pool. The other thing, and, and this will be coming up at that first meeting in January, uh, you know, keep in mind, design and engineering on this thing is going to be hundreds of thousands of dollars as well. Um, so the sales tax can also pay for the design and engineering.
I was just curious, Chris, right now, you know, we're not gonna start right off building something that I want.
Right. And, and it doesn't come into effect until 1 July, too.
But how would we see it?
Yeah.
Do you have something else? Anybody? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Call a roll.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stednikah?
Yes.
Mr. Trinkle? Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number five is request for cereal malt beverage license renewals. Each year, the business that holds a CNB license must be renewed by the city and the state. The required reviewing of the application has been done. There are no changes to the application from previous years. The licensing fee and Kansas State stamp tax have been paid for 2023. So I need a motion to approve the cereal malt beverage license renewal for Aldi Inc. at 1217 North Main Street.
Go move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this one?
This was at our last meeting with the others.
I think they were maybe a week behind submitting to the other.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, we had done.
Yes.
A whole bunch of them, yeah, all at once. Okay. No other discussion? Um, I have a motion and a second. Call a roll.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stednikah?
Yes.
Mr. Trinkle?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number six is addendum to the American Rescue Plan Public-Private Partnership Policy. City Council approved the policy in February, 2022 to partner with private entities to construct public sewer lines in Lansing when they spark growth and investment. Recently, the idea of assisting with the construction of sanitary and storm sewers for commercial and industrial projects has arisen. Since this policy is targeted towards commercial and industry, industrial projects, it could create additional jobs, sales tax, and property taxes in Lansing. The industrial and commercial building appraised at $1 million would generate about $9,112 per year in property taxes based on our current mill levy of 36.448, highlighting a positive return on investment once fully taxable. This policy is based on the American Rescue Plan Act funds and not property tax funds. ARPA funds must be expended for projects that promote government services and cannot be utilized for private service lines. Once ARPA funds are expended, this policy would become null. So I need a motion for the approval of the American Rescue Plan Act addendum for commercial and industrial projects.
Go move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this one?
Do we have any projects in mind, or are we just prepping for future?
No, I mean, I think we've had interest, um, from a couple folks, so, you know, why we didn't include commercial industrial, so we thought we would expand it.
Yeah, I'd say there's at least two that we feel pretty confident.
Yeah.
Are going to reach out to us as a result of this.
It's still based that they have to have the foundation frame up before they can submit the request.
Yes, and then, uh, and again, on commercial projects, I mean, they've gotta pass the Planning Commission site plan approval, so, you know, people can't put up Morton buildings and expect $80,000. They've gotta be nice-looking quality buildings.
Last question, a problem. When does the ARPA funds run out? When do they have to be spent?
Um, so we were, we were just talking about this today. Um, I think they need to be committed by the end of 2024 and spent by 2026. So we just need to, at the very least, have them earmarked by the end of 2024.
So at, at that time period, we would need to vote on whatever's left over and see if there's any projects to commit them on.
Yeah, and we'd spoken internally a little bit, so I mean, if we get to, uh, halfway through 2024, and there's still $150,000 left, there's probably going to be some storm sewer or sanitary sewer projects that we might try to check off the list.
Okay, anybody else? All right, I have a motion and a second. Call a roll.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stednikah?
Yes.
Mr. Trinkle?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number seven is authorization to bid Town Center Sewer Improvement Project. The Town Center Improvement Project is ready to move into the bidding and construction phase. All regulatory approvals have been received and staff have approved the plans. This project includes a replacement and relocation of approximately 1,000 feet of sanitary sewer between West K and West Kansas Street, adjacent to Town Center Drive. The project would take approximately 120 days for substantial completion. The engineering estimates for this project is $950,000, and the project will be funded with the Utilities Capital Reserve. So I need a motion to authorize staff to advertise bids for the Town Center Sewer Improvement Project.
Go move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this one?
Mayor, if there's.
Yeah, I mean, I, one of the things Tony's looking for tonight is, because, uh, we talked about having the fireworks at one or the other locations, if we authorize him, he'd like to kind of start getting this done, and that would kind of take out the main, I mean, the Town Center option. We'd go back to Kenneth Bernard. Or you delay this, do the 4th of July thing and do it afterwards. So it's kind of the governing body's decision, kind of, if we wanna pull the trigger on the sewer thing now or, or delay it until past 4th of July.
And even, even if we wanna do it in the fall, we can still authorize it to go out to bid now, so Tony doesn't have to come back.
Right.
But something, I guess, just to kind of think about, because at a previous meeting, it sounded like some of us really liked the Town Center location for fireworks, and some of us really liked Bernard Park. So just wanted you guys to have that in the back of your minds as you're thinking about this.
Yeah, if, if I could, really, you have three options. You know, we, we commit to doing the project now, we're ready to bid the project, we can break ground in March, it'll butt right up against the 4th of July. That's no weather delays, that's no staffing delays, that's no material delays, whatever, and move and commit to moving the fireworks to Bernard Park. Or hope that we get them done in time so that we can have the fireworks at Town Center in the middle of a major construction project. So those are kind of the two options. Or the third option is, delay the project till the fall, still seek authorization to bid. And then, September timeframe, I'll put this thing out to bid and hopefully get a winter project, where crews typically like to work through the winter on pipeline stuff where they're not doing street projects. You know, it's not, it's not an election cycle, you know, fuel prices go down, that means, you know, equipment prices go down, PVC pipe costs go down, et cetera, et cetera. So we might even see some more competitive bids, you know, going into the winter season than we would if we bid it today. So those are really the three options that we wanted to lay out, but ultimately, get authorization to bid, and then do we do it now, or do you wanna wait?
Tony, I ask my only question, is, is there a sense of urgency?
There is not. Um, we, there's no regulatory pressure to complete this project. We don't have a, a development waiting to connect to the sewer, so we are under, we're not under the gun to, to perform the project now.
And you have no strong feeling either way?
If you want my personal recommendation, I would wait till the fall.
You would?
I would.
Oh, all right, okay.
I would, I'd wait till the fall. And, and that gives, that gives the council options for where they wanna do fireworks.
I like that idea.
I, I don't wanna push anybody into a corner.
Sure.
So I, I think if we wait till the fall, the bidding environment right now is extremely, extremely competitive. The last two sanitary sewer projects, GBA bid, they were 10 to 18% over their engineering estimate. So there's, there's a lot of work going on right now, um, and there's a lot of people wanting to get things done, so. Fingers crossed, I don't have a crystal ball, but maybe we might see some better prices in the fall.
So, so do we wait on, do we wait on doing the bids then, to the fall, too?
We, we would just.
The most news is just authorize.
Right, we're authorizing you to get the bids, so do we, like, delay that, or we authorize you to get the bids? I mean, we're talking about getting the bids now.
No, no, no. No, we would not bid the project at all. I would just have your blessing to, once September rolls around, I just get it done versus having to come back before you and ask again to, you know, advertise the project.
So Tony, our hope is that there's going to be some cost decrease, which will be beneficial to the city.
I believe there will be.
I think it's worth the change.
I, I concur with the cost savings versus worrying about a fireworks show.
Right.
That, I couldn't, it's not about fireworks show, it's about what you said, Tony, which is savings in cost.
Sure.
Competitive bids, like, that, that's what.
Well, you know, a lot of construction crews can't work through the winter, you know, once the ground freezes, they can't play asphalt, they can't do road projects, pour concrete. You know, they can dig pipe, and they like to keep their crews working for the winter.
I will agree with the fall also, A, the cost savings, but when that article came out, and eleven more times after the last meeting, I received multiple emails and phone calls from people saying, yes, keep the fireworks, um, in the city center, so.
Yeah, I mean, that would give us an option to do it at city center at least one more year, till we start building stuff at city center, and then it's kind of like, that ain't happening anymore, so.
Right.
Right, but two weeks ago, you authorized, you know, the bid for the fireworks, and here I am.
Right.
Now, now you guys gotta commit to either doing it, you know, at point A or point B, and I don't wanna do that. You know, there's still plenty of, you know.
Well, I agree, too. I think wait till September to do the bid.
Sounds good to me.
Mayor, we don't need to vote on.
What we're voting on is, is a motion to approve the staff to advertise for bids, not, not necessarily tomorrow, but just for this project, so.
Correct.
As long as we give him the okay now, he can bid it out in the fall.
Yeah.
So I have a motion and a second. Everybody else good? Call a roll.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stednikah?
Yes.
Mr. Trinkle?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Motion passed. Thanks, Tony. Uh, item number eight is Resolution Number B-10202, a resolution authorizing staff to waive the requirements of KSA 75-1120 Alpha. Alpha, double alpha, I like that, in parents. As they apply to the City of Lansing for the year ending 31 December, 2022. Currently, the city's financial statements are prepared on a budgetary basis throughout the year, with year-end adjustments made to comply with Generally Accepted Accounting Principles, or GAAP. The auditors make many of the year-end adjustments as part of the audit process. Recently, the Government Accounting Standards Board has issued several pronouncements, which have added additional reporting requirements for financial reporting, and emphasize in-house preparation of adjustments in GAAP financial statements rather than by auditors. GAAP-based financial statements are difficult to read and interpret for those who do not have financial backgrounds. In the state of Kansas, it is permissible to prepare financial statements using the Kansas Municipal Audit and Accounting Guide or Cash Basis of Accounting. This aligns the audited financial statements more closely with the financial statements used throughout the year. Less staff time would be spent preparing schedules and adjustments to produce financial statements that show information which is not often used by those viewing the statements. City staff consulted with the city bond council and financial advisors to ensure there would be no adverse impact on the city bond rating. So I need a motion to approve Resolution B-10202.
Go move.
Have a motion and a second. Anybody have any questions? Beth is anxiously waiting to answer. What's that?
Second.
Oh, I have a motion and a second. Now Beth's ready to answer any questions, if you have one.
So to put it in layman's terms, we're gonna tell the federal government, thank you for your input, we're gonna use Kansas rules?
Yeah, well, we're gonna opt out.
Right.
Yeah.
We're gonna opt out if they're.
Of GAAP.
This is one of those that don't uniformly apply to all cities, so we can opt out, right, Beth?
We just have to pass a resolution every year, and, and a lot of cities do this, they opt out of GAAP reporting, because it's not, again, it's not as easy to understand for the general person out in the public who might wanna look at our financial statements. Really, at the statutory basis that we would be reporting on, using K-MAG, um, it's more current year, so it looks at current year, like, what are we spending? What are we bringing in, which is how we budget, uh, versus the GAAP reporting, which is looking more long-term. And to give you an example, one of the reports that we prepare every year for, within our GASB statements, um, is we have to track everyone, all our employees who have vacation, and we have to prepare a statement that shows what we would have to pay out if we suddenly went out of business, which, for a city, we're not ever, we're probably not ever gonna go out of business, like, like a company would. Um, so it's, you know, that takes time. The other big thing that's, that's pushing this is the GASB requirements that change every year and have become more and more of a, they, they're just burdensome on smaller cities to have to, uh, prepare these reports, and a lot of cities don't have in-house people who have the time or the expertise to prepare all these statements that are needed. In fact, three cities, we were, I'm on the list, sir, for the. In fact, three cities, we were, I'm on the list for the finance directors in Kansas and there was a big discussion about this. A couple of cities have opted out already. Bonner Springs last year opted out, waived GAAP. Dodge City did it in 2020. Hayes is looking at doing it this year. So we've all been discussing it because these requirements, it used to be that you could have your auditors help you prepare these statements. And now they're really requiring cities to do it. And if you can't do it, then your auditors are going to be forced to call you out on that, on your audit and, and kind of ding you for it because you're not able to prepare those statements in-house. So unless you're required to do that, which cities of the first class are required to, you know, to do GAAP reporting, but cities of the second class and third class are not required to do that. And the latest requirements that have come out with GASB, they estimate that it will take city staff roughly 12 weeks to compile the data that's needed for a report that is probably not going to be used by anyone who's looking at our statements. So it just seems to make more sense to opt out of GAAP reporting and focus on statements that are going to be relevant to our taxpayers and other entities that might be looking at our statements. So-
Cheaper, quicker, opt out?
Yes. Yeah. And we'll, we'll pass a resolution every year. So if it comes to the point where we need to report, move back to the GAAP reporting, we just don't pass a resolution that waives it. But that's, you know, I think at the, at the time that we opted into doing this, we had a city administrator who was convinced that we were going to be a city of the first class within a couple of years. And, you know, you have to have a population of 25,000. We're just, we're not there yet. So why are we incurring these extra expenses when we don't need to be? Another thing that, another thing that came out, I think it was Dodge City, they were like, we ended up saving a lot of money on our audit and other services that we had to have in place for this GAAP reporting. And now we're saving money that way too. So, and I've already spoken to our auditors. I'm like, what's this going to do for our audit? And this year, it's going to basically look the same because they're going to have to do both types of reporting to show just full disclosure, to show, hey, they're moving from this type of reporting to this type of reporting. But she said after that, we'll, we'll review the rest of the contract and we'll come back with another proposal.
And our auditors are from Hayes?
They are. Yeah. Well, the first year they were here, it was funny because they were like, why are you guys doing GASB? And I was like, well, we opted in years ago and I didn't think we could get out. And they're like, oh yeah, you can get out. So since then, I've been researching it and talking to other cities and-
Hayes is getting out and they're a city of around 20,000.
Yes. Yeah. And Tish and Leslie were at a clerks conference just, well, in November. And they, they attended a municipal accounting class and the person presenting was like, get out of GASB if you can because the requirements are getting really stringent and it's going to, it's going to benefit you in the end to opt out of, of GAAP reporting if you can. So-
Okay. Any other questions for Beth? Okay, thanks, Beth. I have a motion in a second. Call roll.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Sudnica?
Yes.
Mr. Trinkle?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number nine is Notice of Intent to Terminate Interlocal Agreement. City council went over the recent Kansas Supreme Court ruling at the October 27th work session. The city discussed a desire to have conversations with partner entities of the interlocal agreement as well as a desire not to have the interlocal agreement automatically renewed for four additional years. Staff have reached out to members of the Fire District Board, Delaware Township, and our representatives to the County Commission. For Judge King's ruling in 2020, the city can rescind its notice of intent to terminate the ILA. But we need to provide a minimum of 18 months before the ILA renewal date occurs. So by issuing this notice of intent to terminate, we can begin the process of reviewing and potentially allocating assets. Once this is complete, the city would have a better idea of the financial implications and what equipment would be needed to be purchased. So I need a motion to approve the notice of intent to terminate the interlocal agreement dated June 26, 2023.
Don't move.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
Just as a reminder for me, what we've talked about is actually moving ahead with talks now. Make sure that we're not going to affect anybody's retirement pensions or anything of that nature. And we're looking at 2026, am I correct?
So we've, we've already engaged in discussions with folks from Delaware Township. Yeah, our local county commissioner as well as, we've notified our members of the board. You know, regarding staff pensions, you know, if they're on KPNF, that's what our police department is on as well. So I would, I would imagine that would be pretty, pretty easy. 2026, that kind of came up when we were having our work session a couple of months ago. I think a couple of council members expressed a desire to kind of take it slow, to be methodical, to really think this through and engage in discussions. So that's where that came from. So that's, that's certainly the city's preference and I had mentioned that to the county commissioner and Delaware Township. But I know, I think the date that's listed in here is more so just so it doesn't renew. We definitely do not want it to renew automatically for an additional four years.
So we're just stopping the automatic renewal and going into the process?
Yes, and we're, we're going to continue in discussions, yeah.
Dialogue.
Dialogue. Well, I think this came up at the, the previous council meeting or the previous work session also. If we don't issue this notice, nobody's under any obligation to talk to us. And, you know, we, we, we were just ignored for three years. And I think our goal is to just have discussions at this point.
Which was what we wanted first of all.
Yes.
It'll be nice when both sides-
And those, those bridges are already, you know, working to be built, rebuilt. And again, just, you know, 99% of my interactions with the staff of Fire District One, really overwhelmingly positive, really have positive feelings about them. I just think there's, there's value sometimes in having everybody under one umbrella. There's value in perhaps having an HR person in conjunction with them, with a professional finance officer in conjunction with them. I think there's, there's benefits in things like that. So yeah, did that kind of answer the question?
So you didn't list High Prairie. Is that one of the townships that's not communicating with us now or?
Yeah, we just haven't done that one yet. I know geographically Delaware kind of borders Lansing. So we, we wanted to reach out to Delaware first. It would certainly be our goal to work with, with both townships. But we haven't spoken to High Prairie yet.
Anyone else on this one?
Can we get ready to actually set, be talking about boundaries? I don't know if the, if the boundaries are still the same, but it used to be up by Haven's Park. You had to, when I was on the fire department, back, that was before they would be, when they were still Delaware. You had to drive all the way through for a house call or medical call, clear through Leavenworth to get on the other side of Haven's Park because that was where, that was the only way in. Now, is there a way that, can we do anything about adjusting the boundaries when we get ready to do that? Maybe that's Greg, Greg is going to answer that question.
Dave, the boundaries are the city, the town, in each township.
City, town, and township. But there was, we always, we had to, we had to drive, if we had a house fire or medical call, we always had to get on the radio and you had to ask Leavenworth for their permission to come through, you know, come through Leavenworth Hop with the truck. And I just wondered if that's something that we could look at, if, if, is that, would that pertain to us when we get ready to actually sit down and talk about who's High Prairie and all this working together?
Dave, not, not for what we're doing at the moment. I don't think that's any part of the discussion for what this is doing. What the next step is, what you guys are planning on doing.
You, we might have agreements with the city of Leavenworth once we have a fire department established, Dave. Where you'd work something like that out. But- But this right here is just with the township.
I would ask if the boundaries were going to stay the same. There's still people out there that are concerned.
Each geographical boundary of each entity will be, remain unchanged. Unless they expand themselves somehow, it'd be just like the city. We would have to NS and expand our boundaries because right now they're fixed. They're just always going to remain fixed unless you take some kind of proactive step. Either you're adding land or you're losing land. So-
I, I was just asked that question and I, I didn't know whether that, if it's pertaining to-
Not, not at this time.
Can incorporate when we get ready, when they get down to talking about it.
Anyone else? All right, we have a motion in a second. Call roll, Tish.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Sudnica?
Yes.
Mr. Trinkle?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number 10 is Appointment of Public Defender. The city's public defender, Jeffrey Sontag, was recently appointed to be the judge in the First Judicial District of Atchison County by the governor. This appointment leaves the city with no public defender. The city was contacted by two attorneys interested in filling the vacancy. City staff consulted with Judge Fuller and the prosecuting attorney and are recommending that James Floyd be appointed as the city's public defender. So I need a motion to authorize the mayor to appoint James Floyd as Lansing's public defender.
Don't move.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on this one? No? Call roll.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Sudnica?
Yes.
Mr. Trinkle? Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Motion passed. Report anything from the department heads. City Attorney?
Nothing to report, Mayor.
City Administrator, Tim.
We, we got a little bit of bad news the other day. We'd spoken about how we applied for a grant for the bridge on De Soto near the Catholic Church. Unfortunately, that was not approved by KDOT. So we will continue to maintain it and make sure it's safe. But, but unfortunately, we were not able to get that grant through the state. Another thing I did want to mention to you guys, and I, I put this in my report. Jason and I have been talking to our aquatics consultant and we're going to have that contract at the next city council meeting, that first one in January. As we were talking though, one of the things that he had brought up to Jason and I was, the splash pad that's currently at City Park. If that was built in conjunction with the pool at that location, he felt like that would save tens of thousands of dollars because, you know, they could be run on the same pumps, same chemicals. Staff would already be out there and the design is already done. So you could kind of just move the design from one location to the other. I know we'd still want to make improvements to, to City Park and do some type of destination playground. Or the idea was even if you do a smaller single pass system at City Park perhaps. But he felt like if we're trying to do the type of splash park that's recycling the water, where you're injecting chlorine and trying to clean it and everything and there's pumps and, you know, you're sending staff out there three or four times a day. He was really of the opinion, he felt like the splash pad next to the pool would save us a little bit of money. That's different from what we had spoken about in the past. And I know, you know, obviously if that's something we do want to entertain, we'd still want to make a lot of improvements out to City Park. But something for us to maybe think about, especially if he's going to be at the city council meeting on January, January 4th, I believe. So if you guys have any questions or thoughts on that, we can talk about that then. Did want to let you guys know that that, that topic came up in discussion. So-
Have you got much response on your survey on the pool?
What's it?
Sent out that, you know, go up on the link and give your opinion of the pool. Has that been out?
We, yeah, they haven't given us any updates for, they gave us an update a couple of weeks before the vote, but we haven't seen it since the vote. When we got that, I mean, it was probably 80% positive was the, the feedback. I suppose people who voted against it probably didn't fill out the survey. But the survey was, was mostly positive. Most of the comments-
I thought part of the survey was which amenities that you want. I think that's what Dan's asking. So did they have a better picture of, you know, they gave us the design downstairs. It was just the rough design. And then we had people come in and say, hey, I like this. I don't like that. I want this. I want a wall. You know? Have they, have they kind of determined what the amenities might look like in the, in the newer design?
No, I, I'll double check. From what I recall him saying though, I don't, I don't think there was a lot of feedback against the current design. Like I, and I know he was saying too, you know, if, if we are generally okay with that conceptual design, it kind of speeds him up and makes his job easier. So he's not starting at square one. We can go back and ask him to see that survey and we've even talked about doing like another open house internally to get more feedback from people.
I mean, I think the rough concept had pretty much a sprinkling of everything you can think of in it, but-
Yeah.
The only feedback that I got, Mayor, was from the swimming coach and some people that are in tournaments, swimming tournaments, that six lanes is generally what they were looking for for tournaments.
Yeah.
Right. I think the rough design had six. Oh, it had five?
I, I thought it had six. Well, if it, if it, if it didn't, we can, we can verify it has six.
Yeah, okay.
The, the only thing I know I'll say at, at one point when we were kind of concerned about costs and everything, the, the costs of lap lanes is actually pretty expensive because it's kind of dead space when it's not being used for a tournament, I guess. So I know that was one idea that was, that was thrown out there. If, if we get our bids back and we're way over budget, instead of six lap lanes, maybe you do four. Maybe you do three and you can't host tournaments, but maybe you save X number of dollars. Again, we're, we're still really in the planning stages on that and I think it's our preference to have six. But I'm just, that was kind of a contingency he brought up, I guess.
Okay.
And then I know we'd spoken a little bit about the fireworks location. I know you were saying you got some, some positive feedback on that. Did any of you other councilmen receive feedback from residents one way or the other about-
Centers.
They just didn't want-
Square.
Town Center.
Town Center, yeah. That's-
Town Center is more open.
Yeah. If you don't want to do the whole thing, you can do like a lot of people did and it's pull up along the highway. You just place the park and watch it and then turn your engine on and go home.
Yeah.
Getting, getting out of there was just so much easier.
Yeah.
Than being at the park.
Okay.
Although you will have a lot more parking at the park.
Yeah.
I mean, than you did before, right? So you have all the parking that's down by the-
And you do at the Lansing Town Center.
Yeah, the devil's advocate side is, is at Bernard, you know, you can have more, more food trucks or whatever. But, but I get the transportation side and being condensed and, you know, it's, there's value in that. So it's, it makes my job easier when you guys give me good feedback. So I, I appreciate that, that you guys were, were on the same page.
We're going to stop doing that.
Yeah.
I wish, I wish we could do it at Bernard Park. I do. I wish that traffic wasn't jammed with one entrance, one exit.
But that's the reality of it.
And, and I wish that we didn't have to have school buses to bring people in, which has been my biggest complaint over and over and over, for a second entrance and exit into Bernard Park. I mean, I keep beating that drum that it would be so easy to get traffic in and out. If we'd spend the-
Well, once you, once you get to the four-way stop sign, you're congested anyway.
Well, I was-
Second entrance.
You have two entrances on that road.
Yeah.
If you're coming out, the one there now, you're going to go left or right.
Yeah.
And then the other one's going to be right there.
And then the other one's going to be right there?
No, it's further down.
Yeah, it doesn't have any cars go out.
One year, they made, come out, and they made the people on the left lane turn left, made the people on the right lane turn right. So you were headed out to the county. Well, people got smart. They were turning around the triangle and just coming back and getting back in line with everybody coming in.
Well, yeah, so a couple of things. I mean, if Town Center continues to develop, we might be out at Bernard Park in a couple of years anyway. But, you know, Lion Weaver Construction did grade and gravel that secondary entrance. That's further west, and we're going to try to continue to maintain that. But what you guys were saying, that's accurate. Like if people are going on that secondary entrance and turning back toward Lansing, they're not gaining anything because then they're stuck in traffic. So we did talk, if we do it out at Bernard Park in a year, two years, whenever, on that secondary entrance, if we put up a sign that said, "To Baser, to Jefferson County," or whatever, we would want those people who use that western exit to go that way because they're not gaining anything if they're using that western entrance and then turning back toward Lansing. So we did talk about using signage, but again, that would really only be people Baser, Tongi, or west of town. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else?
I'm good. I'm good.
He does, but he doesn't want to bring it up.
All right.
He's looking at the time.
Say you're first tonight.
Just wait till next week.
Come on, Tim, just one...
Great, you're first tonight.
All right. Glad to see so much of the staff here tonight. Tony, thank you. Explain a lot, and I appreciate it, and I'm sure the citizens will appreciate if we can have fireworks at the Town Center. And Mayor, on this day in 1891, James Naismith introduced the very first version of basketball with 13 rules and a peach basket nailed to each side of his school's gym. And that's all I have, Mayor.
What are those rules? What are those rules that now?
Remember?
The Lord's Kansas. There it is, you see them?
Can you name...
The Lord's Kansas.
All right, thanks, Greg. Dan?
Last thing, I was talking about the Leavenworth County Port Authority and trying to get the survey stuff going. It was discussed. Everyone agreed to it. They're waiting for a traffic study. And next month, we're going to be putting together a group of people to dust off the 19-year-old plans and bring them up to date and look for the future.
Okay. Thanks.
Everything.
Karen?
Tony, thank you for your presentation. Beth, thank you. You made something that I really didn't get very easy to understand, so I really appreciate that. Matt Schmitz, congratulations. You're going to be missed. I hope you enjoy the Iowa winters. That'd be punishment, believe it.
I think that's a stab, yeah. No such thing as bad weather, just bad clothes.
I thought Don's shaking his head like he wasn't going to miss me when Carrie said that.
And Merry Christmas to everybody.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Carrie. Don?
The only thing I want is to, all the staff and everything, to wish everybody Merry Christmas and have a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Merry Christmas to everybody and Happy New Year. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right, thanks, Dan. Jane?
I agree with what's been said, and I'd also like to bring up, in light of recent events that other elected bodies seem to have. We've all got different backgrounds, different life experiences, but every week, we come here, we don't always agree, but we don't let our egos get in the way. And I'm extremely proud of the way, since I've been on here, that the council has conducted themselves and put the city first. And I want to make that very clear. And the great staff on top of that are part of that as well. That's what I have.
All right, thanks, Jane. Marcus?
I hate to follow that. I can't follow. I can't, that's friggin' awesome. That's a great way to go into the end of the year. Merry Christmas to everybody and Happy New Year to everybody, and thanks for everybody and the hard work. Matt, you will be missed. Thank you very much for all your service and your years here in the city. And Godspeed and good luck to you.
Jesse?
Ditto what Gene said. We've got a great group of people up here that work well together. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. I make a motion. We adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. Call roll.
Mr. Bueller?
Merry Christmas. Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Sudnica?
Yes.
Mr. Trinkle?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
We are adjourned.